Bagley.
Here.
Harding.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Melton.
Here.
Palermo.
Here.
Rowe. Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remarks by Councilmember Vinnie Palermo.
Pledge of Allegiance by the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and justice for all.
Everyone, please have a seat. Thank you. Let's see here. Not that I'm going to be that long, but it's better to sit down, right? You know, last Friday, the city of Omaha, we had a fallen marine that returned home. And if, well, if you weren't under a rock, you definitely paid attention. You're well aware of how important it is to see the sacrifices that happen each and every day. For our men and women in the military, myself included, have been active-duty military. We know that there are sacrifices, and the ultimate sacrifice was given. So for those that were there, that were, you know, outspoken, waving flags for that fallen marine, I really, really appreciate it. And I know his family does as well. And then, as we know, and we heard today at pre-council, we will have a proclamation for the family of Commissioner Boyle, who many of us on this council, in this room, in this building, have known even much longer than I have. So like I would say for all of us, and we'll hear next week, it was definitely my privilege to know Commissioner, Mayor Mike Boyle. I consider myself very blessed to have had him and Ann both at my dinner table numerous times. He shared his wisdom of life, and it wasn't all political, if you knew Mike, and his stories were the best of the best. I learned a lot of history about the city of Omaha from Mike and different plays on how things got to where they got. He will definitely be missed by a lot of us. You know, obviously with Mike and the way he was raised and the neighborhood he was raised, it was always about his kids. It was always about his grandkids. That definitely was his life. He served the city of Omaha well. He served the county, Douglas County, well. And we will definitely give him a proper thank you next week, and he'll be missed. Thank you. Thank you. And we will have that proclamation next week, and we've been in contact with the family. We'll have the family here as well, and have council members each have the opportunity to offer their remarks next week with the family. Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, and welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate your attendance here today. Look forward to your testimony on our many items. I ask you to turn your cell phones to off or at least to vibrate.
Item six, resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Baker Square located southwest of 132nd and Center Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number six is today. Are there any proponents?
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, Doug Dreeson, 10836 Old Mill Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. Be happy to answer any questions you may have. The conditions of the preliminary plat are acceptable to the applicant. I want to make sure, if possible, are we approving both the preliminary plat and final plat today or just the preliminary?
It's just preliminary plat.
Okay. Well, the conditions are all acceptable to the applicant, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today on number six? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, seven to zero. Item seven, an ordinance to rezone property located at 13303 Potwin Street from R2 District to R4 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number seven is today. Proponents, please.
Again, members of the council, Douglas Dreeson, 10836 Old Mill Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. Be here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seven is approved, seven to zero. Item eight, an ordinance to rezone property located at 9239 Ohio Street from R435 District to R5 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number eight is today. Proponents, please.
Good morning. My name's Alvin O'Carroll K. 9201 Franklin Street. I am the applicant requesting rezoning of 7267 Pinckney Street.
So we're on number eight right now.
Oh, geez.
One item too soon. No problem.
Wow, I apologize.
No problem. Is the applicant for number eight here today? Any proponents for number eight? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. I do have one question. This is in my district, maybe for you, Mr. England, since the applicant isn't here. It seems like this rezoning is just correcting, there's an existing duplex on this property, which could be considered a nonconforming use, and so this rezoning just corrects that situation. Is that accurate?
Eric England, Planning Department. So actually, this duplex was built in, I believe, 1964, and there is a provision in the zoning code that allows duplexes in the R4 District that were built between 1952 and 1976. So it's actually a conforming duplex, but to make it more clear and, I guess, more conforming with the zoning code, they're desiring to go to R5 just to clear up any potential confusion. But it's actually a conforming use right now.
Okay. Thank you. I'm supportive of that, and would take a motion. Second, roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eight is approved, seven to zero. Item nine, an ordinance to rezone property located at 7267 Pinckney Street from R3 District to R5 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number nine is today. The applicant, please, Mr. O'Carroll.
All right. Alvin O'Carroll K. 9201 Franklin Street. Again, I'm the applicant requesting rezoning in order to put four units, four townhouse units on this parcel, and basically here to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Good afternoon. I'm Charlotte May, 8774 Lumbermore Avenue. I am the president of the Keystone Community Task Force, and right now, we are asking for denial of the zoning request at 7267 Pinckney. Some of the issues are parking, the parking issues of no parking on 73rd. There is no parking on one side of Pinckney Street. He has no definite drawings or site plans for what the property will look like. And then we have questions of if there's going to be townhomes, are they going to be individually divided lots? He hasn't paid his property taxes for this property or the demolition cost of the home that was currently on that property. We also have questions about the existing water easement on that property. There is a water easement that goes to one home. If he builds over that, what is that going to do to that gentleman's home? Is he going to have to pay for to run water back to his house? There are dead trees on the property. Okay, how do I work this?
It'll come on in a second. There you go.
That are leaning up against power lines. To me, this is unsafe. The lack, and then there's lack of answers to questions or concerns that we have, and we are getting the answer of it's being handled, and I don't understand, you know, how's that being handled? You're not giving us any answers. And then neighbors have advised me that Mr. O'Carroll K. told them that they had to help pay to pave 73rd as he wants 73rd repaved. I don't think that should fall on residents of 73rd that bought their homes on 73rd, knowing full well that it was an unimproved road and they like it that way. So today, I'm asking that you guys, the council, deny his request. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today?
Hello. Doug Lane, 7325 Pinckney and 7321 Pinckney. Get my notes here. My wife and I decided to build a home at 73rd and Pinckney based on the large lots that dominate the neighborhood and the single-family homes that were there. We also knew that the block was all zoned, single-family, and we should be protected from any other types of dense or commercial use. My vacant lot at 7321 Pinckney is twice as big as the lot at 7267 Pinckney, so can I build an eightplex there? I would ask the city council to deny this zoning change as it does not fit the neighborhood. A vote to deny today would be a pro-development vote for older parts of Omaha, as a developer can invest in nice, well-built homes, knowing that someone can't just knock down a house in the middle of the neighborhood and squeeze a multi-unit complex in its place. See some pictures. There's, actually, the lot is right behind those automobiles there, and that's on the corner on the gravel road on 73rd. Auto's parked there. So parking is a challenge, and as you head west, my hand shows up on there, as you head west on Pinckney Street over the hill, cars can be coming down the hill at a high rate of speed. It's just, it's a challenge when there's cars parked on the peak of that hill. It's kind of a blind hill there. And as Charlotte had mentioned, there's dead trees on the property, large dead trees that are dangerous. This one here has been dead for quite a while and has fallen partially down, not all the way down. It's leaning up against another tree that's holding it from falling the rest of the way. So it's clear hazards there as far as the current owner maintaining the lot. I don't know if somebody's camping out there or what. I'm not sure what's going on there. Here's a notice of violation from the city of Omaha regarding the property, regarding trees, and actually, I'm going to bring that up to you guys for that.
Okay.
This is another copy of the same thing, I think. And as was mentioned, there are $2,059.58 owed on back taxes currently, so he hasn't paid the first or second half of the taxes this year, nor has he paid the $8,500 in demolition cost, which to me, that's a very affordable demolition cost, as I'm looking at other houses that are running $25,000 to $30,000. And there was also asbestos abatement was needed inside this house. So the fact that he got it done for $8,500 is pretty remarkable, I would say. So on my notes here, traffic and parking can be a real problem at this intersection of 73rd, as shown in the photos. From what we can get from the photo of what he wants to build, you can see four units with three bedrooms each and a room for, and room for one car in each driveway. I ask that the city council to deny the request to rezone this property and protect those of us who have invested in this older part of Omaha. Yeah, that's all I've got for now.
Okay. Thank you. Any other opponents today?
Hello. My name's Elaine Gamble. I live at 7304 Bedford Ave., so I'm right at the bottom of the hill of this lot. My husband and I bought this property nine years ago, purposefully, because we wanted a big lot that felt like the country in the city. We've really gotten to know our neighbors, and we just love this area. So for this proposed addition to this corner is very troublesome. Like Doug had already said, the traffic is very difficult and congested on this corner. Two doors down is the temple, so they park on Pinckney Street because there's only parking on one side, which happens to be the side of where this property sits. 73rd, where I live, between Pinckney and Bedford Ave., has no parking on either side, so I'm just very concerned about where these people are going to park. And I worry for my neighbor to the south, where what's going to happen if his water gets cut off? I mean, what is he going to do? I'm worried about the lack of green space. I also feel just bullied from when he came around and wish he would have gone to our task force president to have us all sit down and talk to him, because I felt like he was making it sound like, well, you have to get this street paved because that's what I need for my development. When we sat with him on August 25th, he didn't have any type of a site plan. He gave us basically an image that I found when I Googled, and it's row housing, and he keeps selling it as townhome, so I'm just very confused as to what he thinks he's going to build. When we asked him on the 25th of August, he said he had never built anything before. He had never been a developer. He didn't have any company or construction lined up for who was going to do this work. And every time we asked him, he would just say, "It's being handled." So I just feel like we're being handled, and he's not listening to our concerns as a community, because I've owned three different properties myself as an adult in Omaha, and this is the first time I feel like I'm really home, and I don't want to have to move. I just really do not like this, and I feel like a denial is the best option for this property. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Oops, sorry, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Mary Van Sant. I live at 7328 Pinckney. I moved into Keystone and my house 24 years ago without, before I even looked at the house. I stood in the yard, and I loved it. I fell in love with Keystone, and I'm so concerned that having a fourplex unit as opposed to the single-family homes that are in this area, I just feel it's going to set a terrible precedent for more to come like that. And Keystone is just a very, oh, it's very diverse. The homes are diverse, the people are diverse. We love our big yards, and the yard or the land that this fourplex would sit on is roughly one-fourth of the size of the other lots around it. It's just too high density for that corner. As other people have mentioned, that the traffic is terrible there. I can't tell you how many times I've come close to getting head-on, because if people are coming west, there's a hill there, there's another hill as you're approaching it, and it's bad, and people park there. I'm worried, and that's now, and I'm worried about what's going to happen when we have four units with, what if we have like three adults in each unit? Well, there's probably going to be three cars. You know, it's just not good for the area there. I'm not against new building, new construction in Keystone. I'm all for that. Come live in our neighborhood. It's wonderful. But build a single-family home on this lot. And so I am against the rezoning, obviously, and thank you for hearing me today.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Okay. Thank you. We'll close the public hearing. This is in my district. I think I'll start with a few questions. I'm going to call them up, yeah. And so please do come up, Mr. O'Carroll, because that's where I was going. Maybe just your name and address for the record again before we start.
Alvin O'Carroll K. 9201 Franklin Street.
Thank you. So I want to ask a few questions and see if we can flesh out some more details as to what you're proposing here, because I think that's been the concern, right? And that's my understanding from the recent Neighborhood Association meeting, too. Just wanting to know some more concrete details about what exactly will happen if this rezoning goes through. So I do have a few questions about some of the items that came up, but why don't I give you a chance for us to talk more about what exactly you intend to do and this image you're showing here?
Well, I'm not going to address any of the misstatements or sort of false allegations just because I don't believe it's worth the time. There's always been information regarding what's going on the site, beginning with my contacting the planning department, and these images have always existed. It was also the exact same, well, I shouldn't say exact, only because we've advised this to look a little clearer, and I'll explain in detail in a moment. But these four townhomes, this entire structure, this setup, was what I approached every single one of the neighbors, at least within the immediate area, with, and nothing different. You may be able to tell some sort of light lines here. These are proposed property lines. These will be individually owned homes. They are single-family homes per definition. They're just attached, so to speak. The layout, the look of the homes, the site, the layout within the site, it's all based on similar and existing properties, or I should say, similar properties in the neighborhood that exist, including directly across the street. There is a nonconforming multi-use or multi-unit property directly across from this property. It's got a lot of parking, and I'm sure a lot of cars. I can't speak to the existing traffic situation in the area, but certainly there would be ample parking provided to avoid any unnecessary, I guess, parking or inappropriate parking in the area, including on 73rd Street that is unimproved. So there have always been, again, for clarity, there have always been these drawings for this site, and I'm hoping, nothing from the previous proposal, the previous property that I was once in front of you guys with is bleeding into this, because that'd be terribly unfair.
Okay. I do see those as different projects.
Sure.
The one we had previously at 85th and Boyd was much larger scale and more complicated and had many more stages to go through than just a simple rezoning.
Sure.
But still, it's a reasonable request to want to know
For sure.
Exactly what'll occur here on a property that's being asked to be rezoned.
Right. Just for a little bit of information, this is, for context, this is the site highlighted in blue. There are currently townhomes directly to the north. Actually, this R5 that's shown here, and there are a total of six. It's a slightly, of course, unique site that obviously calls for, or at least called for, the setup here. So, and there are also a couple of the properties in the area that are actually, and I'll show you here. This is 72nd and Seward. This is the property that's sort of subdivided into two there. That's also an R5. It's not necessarily in Keystone proper, but it's certainly in the area. That's a smaller lot in total, and it's got four units built on it, two duplexes. So again, I've tried to do my best to keep reference within close proximity with a lot of respect to what's already existing. I understand that it may seem small, but it's certainly within reason as far as the neighborhood calls.
Okay. So tell me some more about the image there. There's four units, but one structure, is that correct?
Correct.
And are you representing that this image is which you will build?
That's correct.
Is this something that you have worked on with a designer or something, or is this just an image you found that represents what you think, conceptually, what you wanted to do?
In concept was, but I'm certainly actually in discussing with the designer on this particular property.
Okay. And you are not, to the question of are you subdividing the lot, you're not, right?
Not, this application is strictly rezoning. The next plat would be platting, correct.
And I think that answers the question about the street. I just want to confirm this with Mr. England.
Yes.
So because we're not, because he's not proposing to subdivide the lot, if this is approved, there's no requirement to repave the street on the side, right, that is currently unimproved?
Eric England, Planning Department. That is correct. With just the rezoning, there would not be a requirement to pave 73rd Street.
Okay. So he would not be required to do this as part of this, but also the neighbors would not be required to do that if they didn't want that to occur? That would have to go through the steps of an unimproved road situation with neighbors wanting to do that and wanting to fund it, but if they didn't want to do it, it wouldn't happen, right?
Eric England, Planning Department. There's a street improvement process that's public works, you know, I can look to that department. There is that potential if the neighbors wanted to participate, but if the applicant decided to subdivide, whether it's splitting the current one lot into two lots or into four lots, that would bring that requirement to the applicant as well as providing sanitary sewer to each platted lot.
Okay. But if this, should this be approved today, for the neighbors that are concerned about having to make that a paved road, they would not have to do that but for the neighbors wanting to do that and wanting to go through that process? That was the point of my question. I wanted to ask you also, I guess, as it applies to the picture there and then the potential parking, because one observation at the planning board level was that, while they appreciated the image and the intention of conceptually what you're attempting to do here, it also notes that the site plan appears to have several deficiencies, including parking in the front yard of a residential zoning district. Plans that are fully compliant with the zoning ordinance and all other applicable regulations must be submitted as part of the building permit application. So in essence, and this may be a question either to you or Mr. England, I think what that's saying is you couldn't build what we're looking at right there because you couldn't have the parking in the front. Is that correct?
Eric England, Planning Department. That is correct. The required parking, you know, it's specific on, you know, whether it's single-family, townhomes, multifamily, they all have different ratios, but you cannot count parking in the front yard setback to meet that requirement. So it depends on how large the garage space is. If it was a two-car garage, you know, for each unit, that would comply, but if it was only a one car, it would likely have to be a tandem in order to get the zoning code requirement for the parking being met, if that makes sense.
So obviously, the planning department would follow through with the applicants at the building permit stage, but it does cause me a little bit of concern that what we're actually seeing here might not be what actually gets built, right?
Potentially. The plan is not locked down with a straight rezoning.
And maybe of no fault of your own, but just of requirements from the city or what have you in that give-and-take process? So although it is helpful to have an image of what you intend to do conceptually, I don't know that we can say, hey, that's what's going to happen, right?
Well, particularly, this is what's going to happen. The only difference is, and I mentioned this in, both in the neighborhood meeting as well as to planning, parking in back, so the reason it's sort of offset is with, you know, to allow essentially exploration of additional parking in back. And there also is, similar to other properties, again, that I've come across, including one that I own personally, the tandem garage. the tandem garage, the two-car tandem is also being explored. So there, and again, I have mentioned to the neighbors, there are various parking options that are being explored and to also meet whatever requirements planning will have. But again, as you mentioned, that will be sort of further, the next phase, so to speak, once the zoning is granted on this particular parcel. As far as the, you know, redesigning or tweaking any of the designs that this particular plan currently is per the designer, again, that's obviously being discussed.
Okay.
So everything with slight design changes, this is primarily a 90%, essentially, what's going to be built.
Okay. And definitely one building, four units, nothing more than that, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. I think I have just a couple more remarks and maybe one more question for you, and then I'll yield the floor here to some other questions. So I've just observed that, you know, we've had a number of cases recently before the City Council that have been increasing density, generally speaking, R2 or R3 to an R5 in various neighborhoods. A couple have been in Keystone. One has been in Dundee recently. And it's, they've been difficult for us, I think, because we support the notion of more housing in the community and increasing density in our neighborhoods for that reason and for the continuance and efficient delivery of city services. But when they're done, and we should be doing that, but when they're done in neighborhoods where we know it's going to be sensitive, it's difficult for us to make judgments on them, and we don't feel like we have all the details upfront in some cases. When there's such a rezoning, maybe independent of a PUD or maybe independent of a final plat, as was the case in 85th and Boyd. And so that makes us a little uncomfortable or makes us difficult to address the issues that our constituents are bringing to us and want us to address. So I do see this as different than 85th and Boyd in the sense that that was a much larger project and this is a much simpler undertaking. But it also only has one stage of approval, at least here at the City Council, which is this. And so we were starting to talk about this this morning, and I wanted to just engage Mr. England again on that conversation a little bit to say that as we go about having these cases or as we go about seeking increased density and additional housing opportunities in our communities, is it reasonable in some cases where we know it's sensitive, or maybe when there's neighborhood opposition that is apparent, that we encourage developers to have more solidified information, more solidified plans at the rezoning stage? Because as we were just discussing, a rezoning, once that's complete in some cases, like this case, there's very little control as to what happens next, but for a building permit approval by the planning department. So I wanted to get your reaction to that notion and, I guess, on a kind of a larger scale, even up and above this particular application, is that a reasonable expectation for us to have when we know we'll have more of these coming through?
Eric England, Planning Department. Yes, there have been several rezonings to R5 recently. I think that's representative of the context of higher land prices, higher building materials. People are trying to maximize the development and redevelopment of their land. So I think that is something that we will continue to see, you know, with recent codes last year centered around TOD, Transit Oriented Development, and the New Orbit Line. There are areas in the city, along with, you know, our urban core, downtown, midtown, established neighborhoods, that we are seeking to densify, you know, as long as it's tasteful and in context with existing neighborhoods. We think that's important. There is a limited amount of land within our potential platting and zoning jurisdiction. We are up against the ridgeline, which we do not pump sewer over in many parts in our southwest and western portions of our city and jurisdiction. There's some land to the northwest, but it is a finite amount of land. So I think continuing to densify and support is important and is supported by the master plan. But yes, there are challenges when we look at, you know, infill projects and how they fit into neighborhoods. So I don't know if that answered your specific question or if you had any follow-ups there, Councilman.
Yeah, I think you're starting to get there. It's just that, you know, again, I don't think this is as complex a project as we've seen before with the previous project that was referenced. It's much simpler in nature, but I also think we're not going to get exactly what we're seeing there in the end of the process, given the planning board's observations and the planning department's observations. And should something move forward today, we're not going to see it again. And so I can understand why a neighborhood is concerned about that when that occurs. So I'm going to yield the floor here to some other council members, but I have one more question for you, Mr. O'Kearkey. Regardless of how this does turn out today, there does seem to be some issues on the site there that are of concern. It applies to the trees and the power lines for sure and some debris, it looks like. Would you commit to cleaning that up and getting that taken care of?
Absolutely. And those are slated to get taken care of. But of course, the specialists are severely backed up. I think we just saw on the news the other day that there was a park, I believe, that was just gotten to as far as getting some of the trees taken care of. So this site has been walked a few times. There've been a few contractors I've had give bids. So that's getting assigned, you know, essentially, well, as this progresses. But one has been selected. Actually, my home personally was just gotten to as far as power line situations as well. So it's something that is obviously of importance to me, and it will get taken care of. There were all ready debris and issues with the home, actually, as it was in a very dilapidated situation that it was in. And unfortunately, I can't control what is done on the property in my absence. But it is being mowed. It's been taken care of. So if things occur, you know, repetitively, again, all I can do is basically handle it as it happens, including taking care of the trees.
I appreciate that. And you're primarily referencing probably a tree contractor there, it sounds like.
That's correct, yes.
I thought I saw some power line issues there, too. And I'll be happy to call the power company and help them get them out there, too, because we don't want that situation for anyone involved.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you. I think, first of all, those contractors may have been in my backyard today giving my tree a haircut, as Mr. Bagley knows. I think the problem here, Mr. O'Kearkey, is that, look, first of all, I should state that I am supportive of everything that Mr. England just said as it relates to the master plan and what President Fesserson brought up in his remarks as well, too. And it is our goal to increase density in some of these areas so that we have more efficient use of what little remaining land, developable land we may have within our zoning jurisdiction. But I think the problem is, is that you come to us with a plan that we know is not something that can be implemented. And that doesn't give the neighbors much confidence in what is going to be delivered at the end of the day. I think it would have been, you know, I'm not giving you advice. I'm just saying, in my opinion, I probably would have been more comfortable with someone coming to me asking for a zoning request, which R1 to R5 is considered low density, which this is, and that's consistent with the master plan, as I've said. But when you present something, or it seems like you're trying to get this approved, trying to give comfort to say this is what it's going to be, when in fact, it can't be that. And if it is something that you were willing to commit to doing, you probably could have made the application with a PUD. And to, that's the problem. Look, I'm supportive of this. I just don't know that, I like the strategy of how it was presented.
Sure.
I certainly understand the neighbors' concerns as to if you're showing one thing, to get the approval without having the commitment to that, that design. And you get the approval, I mean, yes, we do still have the building permit process, which will obviously address the areas and any deficiencies as it relates to the water easement and some other issues. But I understand the neighbors' concerns, that what they're being promised isn't something that's going to be in actuality what the result is. When, again, I think the strategy of your request, I think, could have been rethought. But again, you know, for the reasons, as have been repeated here a couple of times today, is that it's consistent with the master plan. It's increasing density. It's still considered low-density residential. I'm supportive of all those issues, but I do hear the neighbors' concerns.
Sure.
Thank you.
In response to, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. In the minutes of the planning board on 7/7, you had mentioned that you went within a 300-foot radius of the site, and you left information at the homes that people didn't answer. What information did you leave?
No, I don't know that I said that. I said I approached every home within that, what I believe was 300-foot radius, and certainly within the immediate surrounding. There are some that I couldn't speak to because they didn't respond to my knock or ringing the bell. But I walked around with the exact information that was submitted to the planning department. So I didn't leave anything, but I approached every neighbor with the exact same documentation.
Okay. Thanks for, well, I'm just reading the minutes, and I'll just read it to you. And if, I'm not being argumentative, but I'm just trying to understand.
No, no, please, and sure.
So it says, "He explained that he attempted to reach someone at each dwelling, but some people had not answered their doors and some had not been home at the time. So he left information at those homes where he had not spoken to anyone." Is that, I'm just asking, that's what's in the minutes. Is that what you did or you didn't do that?
Well, I, the reason I didn't, the reason it's, I'm unsure why it was stated that way, but I walked around with one sheet of paper. So I couldn't have left anything because I only had that one sheet of paper that I approached everyone with.
Okay.
So I, yep.
Okay, thanks.
For sure, thanks. And
Thank you.
I was going to try to respond to the previous comment. Am I allowed to or?
I'll first recognize Councilmember Milton.
Sure.
Hi, Ms. O'Kearkey. First, I'm going to give you the opportunity to give your response.
Sure.
Procedurally, that's how that works the best.
I appreciate it. There is no strategy, just for the record, of trying to skate anything that's necessary. It's my understanding that this is allowable with addressing anything that is necessary as far as the neighbors' concerns are and the planning department. So there, and I guess I do take some issue with the presumption that I am not committed to this particular plan or intend to, I don't know, maybe do a bait and switch of some kind as to what, you know, what I'm presenting if the zoning gets approved. So again, to me, it appears that a decision has been made as to what I'm trying to do and perhaps trying to mislead by not including a plat or showing something other than this as a commitment of what I'm going to build here. But for the record, this is what I intend to build, and there is no ulterior motive or strategy in requesting a zoning without.
All right. So this is what, and so what I hear, and I'm just going to kind of, in sitting here. First, you know, I don't have a problem with a four-plex being built in Keystone and at this location. We do need more density in the Candlewood neighborhood. We've got a whole bunch of apartments, and we've got a whole bunch of duplexes, and then it goes to homes that people have bought that are on big lots. So the mix is not a problem. And I mean, just having a four-plex is not increasing traffic or anything. I mean, it's four. Having a big, like the one on 85th where we had a lot of people, I mean, a lot of density in a large project, was a little more troubling than a four-plex. And I actually, when I saw that you were doing this, I thought, okay, well, this would be a good start because he could do this one lot with a four-plex and then maybe show the neighbors what kind of builder he was going to be, how good he'd be to work with. So this might be a really good start. But the problem I have, so again, and I really wanted to give you an approval today. I'm just, I'm having some trouble because I don't want it to seem like, no matter what you bring to us, we're just going to say no to you. That's not the case at all. And I might even suggest maybe getting some advice, some advice from maybe some other developers or the people that advise those developers in this area. Because if you would have had somebody with knowledge that I might see in here, but, who could say, well, you can't build with the garages, you're going to have to have two. I mean, some of these things where, when you are presenting a picture that simply can't be done, it does appear if we were going to pass this, the neighbors are going to go, you just passed, you just changed zoning for a project that you have no idea what it's going to be because it can't be what was shown. So again, what I'm letting you know is I really would, you seem to really have a kind of a desire, and you're ready to build, and you're ready to develop and give to our community. And I appreciate that, and I really want to give you that opportunity. But what I would suggest, and the reason I'm not going to support this particular zoning change, is because I do think the neighbors should be presented with something that actually could be done.
No.
And so, because they have, I mean, Keystone is a very unique neighborhood. And I understand, I mean, they are, it's a diverse neighborhood. I don't really think the majority of the people in Candlewood have, and, sorry, Candlewood, that's where I live, Keystone, have an issue with even a four-plex. It's just that they want to know what they're getting because a lot of them have lived there a long time. They want to make sure that just little bits aren't going to change their neighborhood because they really are a community. I mean, they're a really big community. And so what I'm saying is, I'm not against a four-plex being built in Keystone. But I would prefer to see something that could be built that gives the neighbors a little more assurance in this particular case as to what's going to be built. And so that's where my decision is coming from.
I guess, can I get some clarity as to what could be built actually means?
Well, that's why I was suggesting that you would get that advice from somebody with more knowledge than me.
For sure. I know the one-car garage thing that, just as an example, the townhomes to the north are literally single-car garages.
Okay. And, Mr. O'Kearkey, I'm not going to get into some kind of argument with you on what can and can't be built. What I'm saying is you should probably get some advice from somebody who has that knowledge because I'm being told right now what you've presented can't be built. And I don't know what's built around it or what laws were in place at that time. No idea. I'm just telling you, I'm not against you doing development. I'm just telling you the issues that I have with this particular development. Okay with the four-plex, but bring something that actually could be built in order to give me reason to change the zoning and justify it to the neighbors.
Sounds good.
Okay?
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harding, you're recognized. Okay. Mr. Rowe.
Thank you. I think we've had this case come up before where we just didn't have the right information or enough information. And as it's been expressed, I think we're all for increased density. We understand that. And so I'd like to make a motion that we lay this over for a month to give the applicant time to get with a development attorney to understand what can be built, what can't be built. And then you'll be able to come. Because if we vote no today, I don't think he can come back for quite a period of time, right?
Go ahead, Mr. England.
Yeah, there's, if the application is denied for this rezoning, he is not able to resubmit until one-year time has passed.
Okay. Then I'd like to make a motion that we lay this over for four weeks and then allow the applicant time to come before us again with a different plan.
So one question about that, too, from Mr. England. Should it be laid over and should there be a substantial change to the application? How does that impact the process, having gone through planning board? And are there implications to that?
Well, if the request stays rezoning to R5, that could come back to the City Council. However, if there is a substantial change, you know, such as requiring a PUD, that would need to go back to the planning board. The City Council has the right to approve a different zoning classification, but if the request from the applicant, you know, varies from that R5 request, then if, if the request from the applicant, you know, varies from that R5 request, then it should go back to planning board or if they willingly, or if the city council required a PUD or something similar, that should go back to planning board.
Okay. I'd like to change my motion to five weeks. I think we have the day off four weeks from now, so I'm gonna make that five weeks.
There's a motion? Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thanks. I, yeah, I, I was gonna say, if, if it, I don't know what really changes in five weeks because even if he comes in with a, a different plan, a different concept, a different idea, it's still not something that is committed to or, or that, it's not a PUD. And I don't wanna be in a position where, where this, this body is making, making requirements of, of PUDs when, when, when it's a, when it could be a simple zoning request. I don't think that that's very friendly to the, the development community and to developers who are trying to help grow our city, but, so I don't, I, I understand the, the motion, I understand the, the request to, to do so. You know, I, I'd just ask Mr. O'Carroll, if, if, why didn't you at least come in with this application with the, with the replat along with the, the rezoning request? And without, just the, just the replat-
Yeah.
-with the four lots, not showing any, any of the improvements that would go on there? Why, why, why didn't, why wouldn't you take that route?
I actually just, contrary to, to, to doing that, I just, I actually believed showing something would provide some comfort, so it was-
It's, it doesn't because-
And, and there was no-
You can show all you want-
Sure.
-but it's not, it's not something that is part of the request.
Right.
I mean, we had this same situation a couple of weeks ago when someone was trying to get zoned to R5-
Sure.
-without showing and, and talking about maybe having two different, we don't need to go rehash it, but it was basically, it, once that zoning would have been in place-
Yeah.
-it wouldn't have been two lots and in this case, if we gave the R5, it wouldn't be the four parcels that you show.
Right.
So my question is, again, why was the original applica, if that's your intention-
Right.
-why was, why was the original application not submitted as a replat along with the rezon?
There, there, there really was no particular reason. It just, it was intended to-
Would've saved you time in, in the long run.
Sure, and, and theoretically, I suppose it, it could, but I also represented the four parcels in this image, so if, if I had known that this would be the challenge I would have faced, that's absolutely what I would have done.
Well, again, I think that probably goes to the points that, that both sides of me were, were trying to make about maybe getting some good counsel to-
Well, I, I also believed it was implied essentially in, again, what I was proposing, but I totally get it.
Implying it doesn't make it a requirement.
Makes sense, makes sense. So, I mean, I can certainly do that in interim and while we're awaiting the next-
Well, we, so the conversation, aside conversation here is about placing on a file. Again, my point about maybe not supporting the layover is exactly what I just said. Nothing changes. There is, there will be no change in what is required.
Right.
So-
Yeah, I-
It's, if, if you wanna straight up and down vote on, on the zoning, I mean, again, I don't, I, I think you probably should have done it a little differently, but I, again, I'm supportive of, of the request for rezoning. I understand the neighbors' concern. I would be as concerned as they are as well, but-
There is no opposition to-
Hold on, I'm, I'm, I was a long sigh, I'm sorry.
Sure.
I'm, I'm frustrated because, you know, I, I think, I think a rezoning here is, is appropriate. I just, I'm having trouble getting to the point of knowing that a layover's gonna do, is gonna change nothing at the end of the day. I think if, if you intend to have that replat done, if we place it on file, that gives you the opportunity to take it back to the planning board and ask for the replat with the rezoning-
Absolutely.
-then that might give the neighbors a little more confidence.
Sure, and again, there was never an opposition to doing so.
Okay, so I, I know there's a motion, a second on the floor for the, the layover.
There was no, there was no second, so it has died unless somebody wants to second.
Okay, then I'll make a motion, place on file.
Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
I'm sorry, but I did have my light on and out of respect for your motion, Councilmember Rowe, I was gonna second that, so we will take that to a vote out of respect like we do when everybody asks for a layover, so.
I thought Pete said he died for lack of a second.
Let me clarify.
So you're gonna withdraw it? Okay, then I won't second it, but-
All right. That answers the process question. Okay, I don't see any further lights at the moment. There was a motion to, wanna repeat that?
Motion placed on file.
Second.
Motion a second placed on file. Roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
No.
Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passes six to one.
Appreciate it.
Item ten in ordinance to rezon property located at five-seven-two-five South Fifty-Sixth Street from DR District to R4 District, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number ten is today. Proponents, please.
Robert Sargent, three-oh-five Laredo Road, Papillion, representing John Mary Coast is at fifty-seven-twenty-five South Fifty-Sixth Street. Answer any questions may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed? Second, roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item ten is approved, seven to zero. Item eleven in ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate into that district, the property located at three-three-five-two North One Hundred-and-Eighth Street, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number eleven is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed? Roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eleven is approved, seven to zero. Item twelve in ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate into that district, the property located at three-eight-zero-eight and three-eight-two-zero North Ninetieth Street, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number twelve is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed? Roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twelve is approved, seven to zero. Item thirteen in ordinance to amend the boundaries of the ACI four overlay district to incorporate into that district, the property located at five-nine-zero-six Abbott Drive, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number thirteen is today. Proponents, please.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, Douglas Streason, one-oh-eight-three-six Old Mill Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant and one of my colleagues, here to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed? Second, roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item thirteen is approved, seven to zero. Item fourteen in ordinance to adopt a PK overlay district in an R7 district located at two-two-zero-eight N Street and to approve the parking plan, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number fourteen is today. Proponents, please. Got a big day today.
Well, I got drafted into these last two as Elizabeth might tell ya. Douglas Streason, TD Two Engineering, one-oh-eight-three-six Old Mill Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant, happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed? Second, roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item fourteen is approved, seven to zero. Item fifteen to consider a special designated liquor license application for the Broke Down Palace located at eight-eight-zero-five Maple Street for an outdoor music festival on October first and second from six AM to one AM with music ending at one AM each night, alternate date and location of October third at the Barley Street Tavern, two-seven-three-five North Sixty-second Street.
Public hearing and vote on number fifteen is today. Proponents, please.
Yeah, Ross Coley, eighty-eight-oh-five Maple Street, Oman, Nebraska.
Stephen Curry, thirty-eight-ten Davenport.
Thank you. Here to answer questions?
Yeah, we're here to answer questions from the council today.
Thanks, I'll have a couple for you here in a second. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed? So thanks for coming down again and as we've talked before, this is in my district and we've had several events now. I think last time we spoke, you were thinking of maybe seven or eight a year, that kind of volume?
Yeah, we've moved now, so we have now obtained a catering license which allows us to do twelve instead of six STL events, which are only allowed for one day at a time. So we are looking at, the first weekend in May, we do three days and then we try to do another festival in the fall as well. And then this'll just allow us, so we have Husker parties quite a bit on Saturdays, like if we wanted to do a band outside or bags or something like that, just to have the ability to have those extra days, but we don't really plan on using all twelve as of right now, so.
Okay, so maybe a spring and a fall thing and this is, this is the fall too?
Yeah, and if we wanna do an off day, let's say a golf tournament, something like that, where we can bring some tables in and maybe have a, a band play outside, something like that.
Yeah, I'm definitely not opposed to that and supportive of what you've done and I think you've done overall a good job. There was only a few complaints recently, although I didn't, don't think I received any after the most recent one, so.
Yeah, we addressed some concerns that you had on our last event, which would have been that one, normally that's in the first weekend of May, we pushed it back due to COVID concerns. I believe this year it was the third week of June. One of the issues that came up from the event prior to that one was our stage had been pointing, as you, I don't know if you're familiar with the area, but facing north, it's all res, it's all commercial properties from there on out, whereas the south, kind of behind our hill there where that cove is, is residential. And the issue that we had ran into the event prior to that was that our stage was facing to the west and I think some of that sound kind of made its way to the south. So on our last event, we moved where everything would be pointing to the north there and, and I went and spoke to, I know at least one of the neighbors that was new to the neighborhood had some concerns about that event and so we spoke with them and kind of explained the changes that we were making for the, the last event that we had. Also, there was something that came up, our landlord, where we had to, more or less were kind of forced to extend our lease in order to gain his approval, so I believe those were two of the concerns that you had. I might be missing another one, but-
Yeah, I think that's right. I think it did go better, it sounds like to me, so thanks for making those improvements. I think the one other thing we did at the time was to have music end at midnight, wasn't it?
Yeah, so right now, our approval is for one o'clock. We have, have yet to go outside with music after twelve o'clock. And the reason that we are applying till one AM is in case rain delay, if somebody runs late, if, if there was an encore per se that went to ten after, fifteen minutes after, that we wouldn't, we would still be in compliance with our permit, but we always will be planning from now for this application and moving forward and in our past applications, where music outside will end at midnight and then we have a stage inside that will do a smaller performance inside from midnight to two. I don't, I don't think it's appropriate for us to really go after midnight in our neighborhood anyway, so it's really more to cover our behinds.
Good, and that's kind of what I'm thinking too and having played some of these myself, I appreciate the idea or the desire for more flexibility if things don't go exactly on time, but I think it would make it more comfortable if, if we said in the application here, music ends at midnight and otherwise approve it here today. Is that something you'd agree to?
Yes.
Okay, good. Why don't we do that? And I can't make a motion because this is my district, but I, I would be comfortable approving this as long as we stipulate music ending at midnight and I think what you're doing otherwise is doing a good job of having a fun event, but being cooperative with your neighbors.
Yeah, we wanna be a positive member in the community that we're in, you know, don't wanna ruffle any feathers with our neighbors, so.
I appreciate that and thanks for getting things straightened out overall too.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Now, a couple of things for you gentlemen. One, I appreciate the outreach you said you did to the neighbors and you're cognizant of, as business owners, you wanna be respectful of that. How about security? What kind of security do guys have for your-
So we have paid private security. A gentleman by the name of Craig Mustard handles our, like the sound, lighting, security, all the logistics that go on with putting an event on like this. So we'll have two paid security guards working throughout the time. They are not law enforcement, although they are professional for lack of a better term. I hope that answers your question.
Okay, yeah, as long as you've addressed that with the neighbors and you've tried to recalibrate which direction the music is playing to minimize the impact on the neighbors and, and I support what Council President Fesserson to allow that to midnight, so that's what I would support.
Yeah, and just to add on a side note, this'll be our, I believe, our seventh event that we've done and I believe only one of them has, has issues been raised on, so we've tried to correct any sort of issues that would possibly come up in the future and I do want the council to feel comfortable about the security measures that will be provided there.
Thank you. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
I'll make the motion with the amendment to change the music to end at midnight. The only question I had was, do you get asked for a lot of encores?
Only puts beneath, beneath the timeframe when it's supposed to stop.
Are you available?
In compliance with the law.
All right, okay, anyway, that's my motion.
Yeah.
I'll second that, thank you. Motion and a second, roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Oh, that was for the amendment, you guys, as amended.
Oh, as amended, second, roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thanks.
Item sixteen to consider a special designated liquor license application for Shakedown Item 16, to consider a special designated liquor license application for Shakedown Street Tavern located at 2735 North 62nd Street, for an outdoor music festival on October 15th and 16th from 6:00 AM to 1:00 AM, with music ending at 1:00 AM each night. Alternate date of October 22nd.
Public hearing and vote on number 16 is today. Proponents, please.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Yeah, proponents, go ahead.
Ross Coley, 8805 Maple Street.
Stephen Curry, 3810 Davenport.
So similar thought here?
This is our second location we just obtained in November of last year, so...
Great.
Basically the same thing going on in the back.
Great. I was in just recently, and it looked like you were doing a nice job. I was being a secret shopper.
Thank you. Tried to clean it up a little bit.
Yeah, it looks nice. You're doing a good job. People are having a good time. And is there any match to October 15th and 16th, or what's happening in those dates?
It's, sorry, what was the question again?
The dates, is there anything corresponding to that, or is it solely just your...
It's just a weekend, Friday and Saturday.
Okay.
Yeah, just a same outdoor event in the parking lot, to be to the east, behind our back door there, next to the pet shop art gallery in that lot in the back.
Okay, good. And then, just a similar sensitivity there, that's even probably closer to a neighborhood than the previous one. Is this one you'd also agree to, and music at midnight?
Yeah, yeah. But again, an amendment's completely fine with our proposal. Like I said, we automatically just go from 6:00 AM to 1:00, and again, nothing being planned on our part to go past midnight.
Okay, so that's something you'd agree to in the application today?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay, great. Let me just finish out the public hearing here as well. Are there any proponents that want to speak? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Fesserson. So I believe we got an indication that the restaurant tax on this property is delinquent?
I paid it today.
Okay.
He said that he was gonna contact you guys.
Okay, good, good to know.
I didn't even know about it.
Okay, well, I just found it interesting that one was and one wasn't, but thank you for clarifying that. I'm gonna make the same motion to amend the approval with the music ending at midnight.
Second. Roll call.
Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Second.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, guys. I appreciate the Grateful Dead reference, too.
Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the City Council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by the City Council Rules of Order.
The public hearing on agenda items number 17 through 20 were held on August 31st. Is there a motion? Roll call.
Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items number 21 through 64 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. And I will let council members know that we have Mr. Meves by Zoom today, representing number 21, if there's any questions about that manager application. Any proponents today? Deputy Chief Bang, come down.
Deputy Chief Michelle Bang, Omaha Police Department, 505 South 15th Street. And I am here with Chief Pilot Frank Peck to answer any questions you may have on items number 40 and 41, and we are proponents for those items.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Items, items 43 through 64 are proposed member appointments to serve on various committees for the City of Omaha. Each member selected are all indeed qualified and will do an outstanding job. Yet I do remember the number of riots that the City of Omaha faced last year after the death of George Floyd. So I would be remiss if I don't, or would not remind us as a whole of our commitment to ensure a diverse selection process when we're making these appointments. Thank you.
Thank you. I would also observe that it is unusual that we would have so many appointments on one agenda. 21 approvals in one, on one agenda here, I think it is, for spots on city boards and commissions. And having been in the mayor's office, and Mr. Harding, too, you know how difficult that is to keep up on these, because there are so many, and it is a process, and many of them have specific types of qualifications to fulfill. And that is the case with some of these today. But I think it is a legitimate observation Ms. Johnson is making, that when we talk about the commitment to diversifying the city, and we all have, that we do take a stronger look at these. I do believe it's the mayor's ability to appoint and the City Council to approve those appointments. But nevertheless, the point is valid, that we need to be committed to diversifying our city boards and commissions, and I have not gone through all of these as Ms. Johnson has, it seems, but I think we could be doing a better job with that overall, especially when we have so many on one agenda. Roll call.
Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton.